The district mission statement. Terry, would you like to read that?
Sure. The mission of the Exeter West Greenwich Regional School District is to empower students to contribute to school and community by providing substantial learning experiences in a safe, trusting, and motivating environment.
Thank you. Okay, we have open forum. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, you may do so now. We have more people than usual, so let me look around. Okay, I think we're all set. All right. We will go right to the Metcalf School presentation.
Terrific. Yes. So we do have a slideshow, so I don't want to blind you. So if you would like to see it. Over here, I think you're all set on each side.
It's the high-tech stuff.
The high-tech stuff. Okay. All right, so obviously, welcome to Metcalf, everyone. What a nice turnout. We have drilled. I am Mrs. Rattigan, the principal.
And Mrs. Fish, the assistant principal.
And we have had an awful lot of fun putting together a presentation tonight for you all and for our fabulous school committee to get a little taste of what it is like at Metcalf School every single day. So first, could I have all the student volunteers stand up?
Any Metcalf students.
Any Metcalf students. And help us recite the mission statement, okay?
At Metcalf School, we believe all students can achieve academic excellence and lifelong everlasting success.
Awesome job. You may be seated. So, Metcalf School is a place where student engagement is at the forefront every single day, and that is because that is the best thing to do for students, to engage them. But it also comes from our district's strategic plan. The plan states that we believe that when instructional practices are nurtured and cultivated with ongoing reflection, revision and realignment, improved student outcomes will occur.
And that's expressed with priority three, as you can see here, strengthen and broaden repertoire of instructional strategies to cognitively engage each student in meaningful learning. Not mean all of them.
So what we did when we created our school improvement plan was to take all the goals in the strategic plan, but we're highlighting this one tonight. And we said that we will strengthen and broaden the repertoire of instructional strategies to cognitively engage each student in meaningful learning.
And we'll do that through the strategy that's listed here, increase and strengthen the integration of best practices to increase student engagement and achievement.
So that's kind of how everything trickled down from the district strategic plan, just so you can get an idea of our plan. So this is a taste of what our Makerspace slash Integrated Arts program is and the kind of thing that students create with teachers facilitating and teaching along the way. So just enjoy. Is this on?
Oh. We sip off some lunch after our first class. We're all sitting down and just having a blast. We're talking with friends. We're eating our food. The cafeteria is in a wonderful mood. Metcalf School and yeah, we rule. Blue and white, yeah, that's all right. Recenters next. We're ready to play. We'll fall in the playground. We could stay all day. Metcalf School and yeah, we rule. Blue and white, yeah, that's all right.
Done? That was the Mustang. That was our Metcalf Mustang. Are our contributors here? Stand and take a bow, please. Awesome job. Okay. So we are not playing Jeopardy, don't worry, okay? But here's what we are going to do. Each one of our grade levels has come up with an activity that really illustrates how engaged they are and the creative ways that their teachers have designed lessons and given them hands-on, practical experience and inquiry-based learning. So what we've done, we have some stations centered around the room. We have Grade 3, Grade 4, Makerspace, which is also Integrated Arts, we're in the process of probably changing the name, Grade 5, and Grade 6. So what I'm going to do is assign you a station to start at, my school committee members. Everybody else in the audience, you're ready, you can free flow around, wherever you'd like to go. So you're going to start at the station that I assigned to you now. I'm going to play Jeopardy music. When the Jeopardy music stops, you move in a clockwise direction to the next station, okay? Clockwise. All right? Clockwise, you move when the music stops.
Look at the clock if you need to.
Okay? So remember what I tell you. Three, four, five, six. Makerspace. Three, four, five. Who are we missing?
I did it.
Six. And somebody can go with Makerspace.
Makerspace.
Who? Pat, Makerspace. You're going to start at Makerspace, so nobody has to travel by themselves. We work as partners here. So go get to your station. And again, when the music stops, move clockwise. And students, this is rapid-fire minute-to-win-at-speed. Here we go.
When two or three materials are combined, it is a mixture. I am making a mixture of gravel and water. I'm mixing five milliliters of gravel and 50 milliliters of water. You can use a screen to separate the solids from the liquids. I have the gravel on the screen and the water in the cup.
Very nice.
I'm making a mixture of diaphragmatic earth and water. I'm mixing five 50 milliliters of water and five milliliters powder. This mixture can't be separated with a screen, so I won't. Fold the filter, fold it in half, and then in half again. You open one of the pockets and place it in the bucket. Pour the powder into the filter, and then you're left to need water.
Awesome.
And the powder.
Do you want Mr. Ross to drink it?
No.
And then the powder.
Okay, I can stop. Stop now.
Great job.
That's a great solution.
Yeah, because that's the only way we can separate it, because it's a special mixture.
Very good. Good job. All right, girls. Future scientists.
I like the goggles, too. Make sure you're looking for the screen.
Well, thank you very much. That was great. Good job.
You guys go to Makerspace. We're listening, Mrs. Rattigan. We're listening. Clockwise. Come on, Mrs. Aronathus. Clockwise.
Clockwise. Well, no. Clockwise is this way, right?
Okay.
Is this your project?
Yes.
Or can you explain to me about it?
So, the question was different brands of balloons withstand same amount of pressure. And when I heard balloons, I felt like it's hard to really hold up. So I decided to turn it into his house. So I thought that they weren't going to withstand the same amount of pressure because some could be made of different materials. And also, it's kind of hard to measure how much air you're putting into a balloon before you try to pop it. And these are all of my results. So what I did was I blew up a balloon and measured it to one foot, or 12 inches. And I placed a 25-pound weight on top of it and timed how long it would take. And those are the results. They're not Dollar Tree holds for the longest time, so.
I wouldn't.
Isn't actually metal? It's just a staple. It's a staple here. Here on the table on the elements, I put it to higher. I'm not sure. Be interesting. Yeah.
That's a really good exit.
Yeah. Thank you. Found it in my.
What's going on?
My question was. Yes. These things hold up for $50. This one I used because I wanted to see which one would melt slower. And so I have my house, my house, my oil will melt slower. And this is my procedure. This is my method. And then my conclusion was I found that my pockets were directed. And yes, therefore the plastic wrap. Therefore, just. They had a size on the plastic. Yes. Yes.
How many times did you have to do it?
I did like, you just have to like do one, two. When we were setting up the. And just take charge for like 10 minutes. That's what I did. She asked was that, and the side aside.
You guys are going through science, you guys are going through math, you're going to start.
These are from our class as well. These are just.
This is work.
They call them black. I think kind of like you're older.
I want to go back to school.
I just want to go back to school.
Thank you so much.
Makerspace.
This is ours. The Makerspace is.
Oh, okay.
So we took, we were creating the paper towel and just to try and get the marble and the.
Yeah. Oh, it's called Mostrap. Cool. Try it again. See if it works this time. There it goes. Yay. Good job. Good job. Really cute. Who thought of this?
Our teacher this time.
Yes. Excellent. Love it. Reminds me of Mostrap, right?
Yeah.
The game, yeah.
We just took the computer apart last year.
Oh.
Oh, this is from the computer, too?
Yeah.
Now, is this an after-school?
Yeah.
So did you have it today?
Yes. It's every Tuesday.
And that's in the new room, right? Back there?
Really impressive.
Oh, yeah, this is just like a modified version. We're going to make, take the whole paper towels instead of cutting them. And this is just going to be like the background, because we're making the background. This is a lot of what we were doing for the hologram. It's kind of hard to see. Yeah, it's a lot better in the dark.
I see.
Yeah.
Yep, I can see.
Wow.
Look at the size. Yeah, it's awesome.
Really impressive, these kids.
They're psychedelic from this one. I like it.
Really cool.
So this is an after-school activity?
Yeah.
We need to keep funding stuff like this, right?
Actually, the after-school activities in this school have blown up.
A what?
They've blown up.
Yeah, it's great.
Jewelry-making they were doing. I wish I had these activities from when I was in Metcalf.
This could really. Hello. Hi. How are you? We are great. Grade 3 worked on graphing and using scale photographs. So Owen, do you want to begin?
Class needs a scale, we are a friend. Scale is good to find. I need to use. The overwhelming trend for the entire day game is loyalty. Loyalty is the most important trait to have a friend. I would choose loyalty and honesty to my teacher, too.
Sounds good to me. I think those are two good traits.
You don't want a friend.
You don't, you have, I'll give you that, you want me to send down? Because everyone has.
Some of the kids at the end haven't gotten. Oh, because they're not getting down there. All right, I'll find the squares. Okay. I knew it. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Pretty good.
The second was, I don't know, because maybe, when did you do the surf? When did you do the questionnaire?
Oh, like, all the way, like.
Oh, it was near Halloween?
Yeah. Yeah, but I picked out, I picked out, but then eventually he became a vampire. And then Lisa Mount was something funny.
I know it.
It's, everybody says it's unusual.
Yeah. That's neat. I'm not surprised at that, though. I'm not surprised. I mean, I know my girls like to do that.
Yeah, I might not know what I'm going to be.
I'm just trying to tell you where they started. Work with the faculty last year. Yeah, came in to work with us with data and looking at our Ibet explorers.
For Halloween, I am going to eat. Our class made a line for each x representing a child. That's mean to you. Only 14 students represent.
There's five of every graph in a different way. The kids go in and learn to analyze and interpret different kinds of graphs. And they come to it.
He was that. He became a vampire. I. There's no one knows money.
No clue. We already know.
Someone may miss. I wonder.
Did this area. Because we don't have any instructions until the end. So we said we got to do something. This year, we went up 19. And the whole grade has already been.
Wait, what were you again?
Just using them.
Oh, yeah, fighting zombies. Fighting zombie, weird zombie.
Are you going to help?
Okay. Yeah. Twenty-three, we participated on our graphic. Oh, that's.
To the class leader, Eric, we were very interested in this video. That was like Eric.
And I like the colors, too. They kind of pop out. Oh, yeah, we have others, if you want to go down.
Lots.
Oh, okay.
So basically, you need to get these guys really hard. And the first one to get tricky is just going to finish. And there's three different things that we need to have your favorite. And there's color and board and where to put. You get to answer right, you catch a ball, die, it goes to bed.
It's process check.
So when they get to play this, is this an activity in school?
This is a new game, but we're probably going to like.
Do you play as a team, or is it?
Usually it's an individual game.
So it's very competitive.
Good job.
I passed one of our favorite things, giving it. Each year, I mean, that's good. Our dad shows that most of our class likes dessert. Dad also shows that no one loves veggies that are supposed to be given dinner. And in other classes, they don't like veggies that much either.
Zero.
Zero. Yep, some classes had some veggies, because every class would do their own bar graph. And then we'd go hang them up in Mrs. Phil Day's room, and we'd do data analysis in her room. Yeah, every class, every month, we'd choose something different, from holidays, Thanksgiving. They'll have to choose a new one next week.
What is your new?
Donald.
Okay, everyone should have finished their fifth rotation. Students, absolutely, hands down, fabulous, fabulous job. Give yourself a big round of applause. And teachers, please raise your hand and wave so that we can say thank you so much for coming and facilitating. And school committee members, if you would like to come on back up to your table, we have a little test tomorrow. So you just have to. I highly appreciate you. Thank you so much for coming. I know, isn't that fun? So actually, you know what? I need you to. Sit over to the side a little bit. I do need you. Okay, so we're going to have a quick game of clicker. Who knows what clicker is? Students know. Okay, so let me explain to the adults in the room what clicker is. So nice and quiet, okay? So clicker is a technology-based formative assessment that many of our teachers are using. And you see a card in front of you that looks odd, okay? So that is your card. It has a number on it, so you are identified by that number up on the screen in a minute. Nobody needs to know what number you are, so if you get an incorrect answer, only your facial expression will give it away, okay? Here's how you select the right answer. It's multiple choice. Do you see the letters on your card?
Tiny.
Tiny letters? If anybody needs to borrow my cheaters, I have some. You're going to make sure that whatever letter you choose as the correct answer is at the top, okay? And then I am going to scan your card. You're going to hold them up in front of you when you feel like you've got the right answer. I'll scan them, and I'll show you how it works. It's pretty awesome. Okay, so it's just going to take a second here. Fingers crossed, everyone, that this works, okay?
It worked three times today. I don't hope we use up all of our luck.
Second. Come on. Takes a second to sync. Here we go. Okay, so I'm going to read the first question and the answers.
Let me just explain one thing. A is true, B is false on your card. So don't look for a T or an F. A is true, B is false.
Okay, so Integrated Arts/Makerspace provides students with opportunities to be creative problem solvers and build with their hands and minds. A is true, B is false. Hold up your card. To me. And look for your number on the screen. When you see it, you can put your card down. You see your number over to the right? You see your number? Over to the right. Did I get everybody?
No.
Who didn't I get?
Your water bottles in front of it.
Oh, sorry.
I think you got it now, right?
Um, no, I don't.
Yeah, I think it's...
Well?
Yep, you're there.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so now for the correct answer. Correct answer is true. So we do not need to know who number nineteen is. Okay. All right, let's go to next.
Bob!
See how fun this is? Graphing meaningful student information. Choose your correct answer. Think I have everybody's? And everyone got the correct answer, C. Motivates students to understand how different graphing methods help us understand information quickly.
Good job, Bob.
Are we running out of time? I've got three more questions. We can wrap it up, or you tell me?
I'm going.
You're going? Oh, we got a little competition going here?
Mrs. Donovan wants you to keep going.
Okay.
I'm in it to win it.
Reading comprehension board games helps students.
Get faster.
They are getting faster. Well, some. I think... How'd we do? Get everybody? Think I'm missing somebody. There we go. Correct, correct answer.
My answer is...
You're not up there? Oh, I'm sorry. D, all of the above. I'm sorry, I'm sure you should. All right. Guess mine. Science engages students in hands-on inquiry-based learning. True or false? And the answer is? True, and everyone got that correct. Awesome job. Last question of the evening. I know, now I should have the music on, too. Learning at Metcalf Elementary School is: A, engaging; B, differentiated; C, challenging; D, all of the above. I hope no one gets this wrong. How'd we do? Got everybody?
Yep.
Okay, and the correct answer is? All of the above. Let's give our senior community a round of applause. Brilliant, absolutely brilliant. And that is learning at Metcalf in a nutshell. Hope you enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I love that the kids are interactive. That's my favorite ones of sorts.
Do you have any more? All right, I will shut this off, so it's not too loud in here.
Oh, sorry. No, I wanted to... Yeah, I just didn't wanna start calling. And you weren't done with the surgery?
Thank you, everybody.
Wait, 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 wait.
What, 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 what? Oh, make sure that's off. I think it is. Thank you. Okay, we will move to the consent agenda.
Okay, consent agenda includes the approval of our regular meeting minutes from March 8th, as well as executive session minutes from the same date, and then special meeting minutes from March 15th. We have a, um, athletic appointment for head softball coach at the junior high school. We have a couple of resignations, one from an extracurricular advisor, and also, sorry.
Thank you.
One from our groundskeeper, and also our monthly bills.
Can you turn it up a bit?
That's better.
Okay, we're gonna pull the special meeting minutes, right?
Yes.
So pull a special meeting minutes. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the special meeting minutes.
So made.
Second.
Next question?
Yep.
Just to clarify, um, item B3B. Uh, I didn't have a copy of that resignation in my packet, but I assume that you have it on file.
I do.
But, okay, thank you.
All in favor? I... Motion carries. Okay, then we have the...
Claudine, I don't know if you're aware that the coach is here. Mr. Moran. My favorite appointment so far. Well, he's my daughter's coach, and he's awesome, so...
Yes, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Moran last week, and, uh, he can be a great addition to our athletic coaching staff. And thank you for coming to the meeting tonight, so, David Moran.
Welcome. Thanks, Dave. Have a great season. And then, uh, let's see, so we got a motion to approve the special meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we have correspondence, um, the revised calendar for this year.
Okay, hold on a second.
Yep. Jim's multitasking.
Um, the... Okay, so relative to that, um, I was very excited to have the revised school calendar for 2015-16, ready for your packet. And then yesterday happened. So I've prepared for you a revision to the revised calendar that is hot off the press because it includes yesterday. Okay? So basically, um, in green, I've indicated the snow cancellations, and then I've added the three days at the end of the school year. Gets us out on Thursday the 16th. I've shifted all of the end of quarter, end of trimester, mid-quarter greeting...
Thank you.
Periods. Um, and also shifted the, the highlighted yellow dates, which are the last full day for seniors and the start date for senior exams. So basically, just added the three days and shifted everything over to reflect what I hope is the last change to this calendar.
Okay, so this is it for the seniors. Are we, are we getting close now with renovations?
No, we're fine.
Oh, okay.
Completely fine with seniors, yes.
So is the start date, is that for the kids, the 29th as well?
Oh, this is, we're talking about the...
We're looking at the revised calendar.
Oh, 2015, okay, okay, for that one, okay.
Um, okay, then correspondence, there was a resolution from the town of Warren. Um, 2016-17 budget. All set? Okay, new business now. We have a new calendar for 2016-17.
Okay, 2016-17 calendar is, the draft is developed and is in your packet. And I will tell you that I brought a bunch of information, including, um, the communities that are around us and what they have decided to do with respect to February vacation. And as you can imagine, they're all over the place. Um, we have traditionally been sticking to the calendar adopted by Charahoe because that is our official district that we send kids to for current technical education opportunities. Um, I did have an, a discussion with the PTA president who kind of expressed some of the parents' interests. That was in January, so I just printed that out. I have the RISA calendar, the 16-17 RISA calendar. That's the calendar that is sent to all districts in advance of us producing our own local calendar. The similarities are the start date. The RISA calendar has students beginning on the 29th. Uh, we've taken advantage of the primary day as one of our professional development days, which we are allowed to do. The RISA calendar has the day before Thanksgiving as a day off. Um, and they also have December 23rd as a day off on the, on the RISA calendar. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody has adopted exactly as, as is. Um, and in addition, the RISA calendar has a modified February vacation. Just two days off in February, and then the kids go for the rest of the three days of that week. And despite all of that, kids are still getting out, according to the RISA calendar, on June 20th. And the draft calendar that you have has our last day of school as June 16th.
So how do we have more days off in February but finish...
I know.
We start earlier.
We start earlier.
I thought you said...
I thought you said the start date was the 29th for the RISA calendar.
It is, for the RISA calendar for 16-17. Yeah, there, there are some differences. Let me just go over this with you. 13, that's correct, October, just 10th. October, November, 8th, 11th, 23rd, it's all the same, December. Is the same, January 2nd, 16th is the same, February 17th. So we have the three days in February.
Right.
March is the same, April is the same. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. They do not get out on the 20th. They get out on June 13th.
Okay.
And then they have makeup days listed from the 14th to the 20th. That was a mistake. So we've pretty much, with the exception of February vacation, because Charahoe has not adopted that element of the RISA calendar, um, we've pretty much followed the recommended RISA calendar. The, um, the districts that are around us, Westerly has modified February vacation. They have the 20th, the 21st off, which is exactly what the RISA calendar is. North Kingston completely eliminated February vacation. Charahoe South, Charahoe South Kingston Narragansett have gone with a traditional calendar, which is what we're proposing here. For the first time, we have some districts in the state who are eliminating February vacation and April vacation and looking for a March vacation. That was several years back, that was the discussion. And then when the new testing schedule came out, and March was a testing month, that was kind of put on the back burner. But now some districts are beginning to look at that. So again, we, basically what's happened this year is we've introduced yet another variation, which is eliminate February, eliminate April, and introduce March. So the districts are still really quite all over the place. And my recommendation is to stick with the February break based on the Charahoe calendar. So, and you'll notice, uh, the other thing that I did for the first time on the calendar is identify the Jewish holidays and make note of the fact that there cannot be evening activities because despite the fact that that has been communicated, mistakes are made, and there have been scheduled events. And that's caused a little bit of, um, concern on the part of our Jewish population. So I, I figured that we could identify it right on the calendar just to keep it in everybody's mind. Uh, and then the election cycle. So we have a primary day, and we have Election Day. The junior high school and the Metcalf gymnasiums are used as polling places, so, um, no activities, no PM activities on the days that are indicated because of the polling that's happening.
Any questions?
I just, I have a, oh, go ahead, Terry.
I was just gonna ask what kind of input you had from the PTA?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right from your...
I'm trying children's dismay if you're still here. In a, in a gist, I basically said, parents like being a little bit later in August.
Yep.
The August 24th, 25th felt very early to parents this year. Loved the day off before Thanksgiving break. I always hear mixed things on February vacation. I'm a fan of it, but I know there's some folks who aren't. And then the extra day at Christmas, too, I haven't heard good things, though.
It's a funny break, though, because it's shorter. Because of the way it falls.
Yes. Christmas break?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. It's a short, it's one of the shortest Christmas breaks...
Yeah, yeah.
Based on how the actual holidays fall. And we actually, so I thought about, what are the implications of January 2nd, which is not a holiday? But because the actual holiday falls on a Sunday, we... We have people that get that holiday as a day off, so...
Right.
Most districts are, um, need to have the 2nd one because it's, it's the date to honor that holiday of January 1st.
I'll just say that the, I got a lot of feedback on the start date. That was the biggest, the 20th, the 25th was just a tad early. Instead of as late in August as you can. I don't think people are opposed, I think people are okay with not going back as late as some of those other districts did after Labor Day. And some of them weren't going back till like the 9th. But, um, yeah, that was probably the biggest piece.
It's interesting, and I've had this conversation with a lot of people. I've heard that a lot, too. Um, the start date this year was one day different than the start date from the previous year. It's, it has not, it was not changed significantly this year. What changed was its relationship to Labor Day.
Oh, yeah.
So, because Labor Day was a little bit later. So there were a couple of districts that went back that week. Were one day earlier because we moved our professional development day. But there were other schools that had orientation, then professional development, then the kids came in. So we did orientation, then the kids came in, and our PD day was a little bit later in the month of September, uh, October this year. But when I, when I told people that, they, they didn't even believe me. Some of them didn't believe me that it was, that we actually started at roughly the exact same time. But what changed was the relationship to Labor Day. You know, in this calendar, we are starting a little bit later.
I think people would be happy with that.
Yeah. Then in relation to Labor Day, it's really just one week.
Mm-hmm.
That's the big change, too. too.
I had asked the superintendent about attendance of students and staff on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving because in my memory, this was the first time we had the Wednesday off. So I didn't know if that had a backtrack effect on attendance on Tuesday.
So I did a lot of pulling, and it's quite fascinating to look at it. The staff attendance was, I pulled it from the day before, the day that we got out, the last day before Thanksgiving break, which the previous years was the actual day before Thanksgiving. And 2012, there were 10 staff members out, which is low. It's, like, we had days that last week where there were 36 to 38 staff members out. But it's been a very trying time with people's health these last years, last few weeks. The 2013, the day before Thanksgiving, there were 12 staff out. 2014, there were 12 staff out. 2015, that's this school year, there were 13 staff out. But of the 13, we have several that were out long-term or hadn't even come into school yet because they've been out since the start of the school year. So it's roughly the same, attendance is roughly the same for staff. I pulled the attendance for students at each school. Now preschool, it's a small population, right? We had seven children out. Some of them were, well, one was on vacation and the rest were just your typical absences. No real, no real shift at Wauwum. There were a total of 25 students absent in the three grades, K1 and 2. So that's typical. Metcalf, there were a total of 20 students absent, which is low. And this is four grade levels here, 3 through 6, only 20 students absent. But again, the younger kids are absent more frequently traditionally, so nothing really significant here. The junior high school, there were 21 students absent, fairly typical. The high school was a train wreck. And the reason I say that is, and I went and pulled multiple years, but the high school had the most number of students absent this year on that day than any other day so far.
Wow, on the Tuesday?
On the day before, the day before Thanksgiving. There were 102 absences. If you separate it by the grade level, 67 of the students were seniors. So let me clarify that a little bit. It doesn't really matter what year we look at. There is always a planned absence day that the seniors have. And as much as we try to prevent that and be proactive about it, there is a day. They picked this as their day for 2015. So it looks horrible. It's higher than it was, way higher than it was the day before on the previous two years, but 67 seniors because that's 50% of the class, more than 50% of the class, did not go to school on that day. So that's, that's the information.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we have a motion?
I'd like a motion to accept the school calendar for 2016-17. Is that it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried. All right, we have the policies. Let's see. Do you want to want to time out all the deletions at the same time?
Well.
Remind you which replaced the one that we said you.
Let me just, because some of these we're not voting on today.
Yeah. Yes, the 3801, we have our first reading of that one, so let's skip that.
3801, 3802, 3803 are all connected to the new 3801. So numbers 1, 2, 3, and 4 are all connected. And the new policy, what you have in your packet is the current version, so what's in our current policy book for 3801, Introduction to Purchasing and Payment, 3802, which is just called purchasing, and 3803, which is called Cooperative Purchasing. Then you have the new 3801. This is considered a new policy because it's, there are some significant adjustments. It basically incorporates all of what was contained in the previous policies, 01, 02, 03. And just like the last budgetary policy that you looked at, this has been reviewed by the business office and the policy subcommittee. It does reflect current practices and it does incorporate all of the major elements of those previous policies that, quite honestly, all covered the same thing, purchasing. So this, you know, this is a first read. We do not have to vote on this tonight. You have the opportunity to look it over. You can compare it to the previous policies, which we've included in the packet. We can take questions today. We can take questions the next time, but we will put it on the agenda for a second read. And like you did the last time, I'm thinking that you probably want to hold off on the deletions and do it all together because they're all interconnected.
Let's do that. I don't think we have any questions tonight for that policy.
So is the main intention consolidation or to be specific in the section with the general laws?
It's, well, it hasn't been reviewed in quite some time, so it's consolidation because they really all are about the exact same topic. But we also wanted to make sure that what was in the policy reflects current practice and current requirements. So it's been updated and it's been consolidated.
Then I have 3804.
Okay, 3804, same thing. This one is first read. The old policy, did you have a copy of the old policy?
No.
The old policy is about two sentences long and, and obviously, the process for reimbursement for expenses related to travel is a little bit more involved than the two sentences that were in the previous policy. So this is also considered a new policy. It does reflect current practice. It has been reviewed by the finance office and the policy subcommittee, and it is much more specific than the old policy that basically said not much.
Any questions to that one? Go ahead, Terry.
For the preapproval process, is it sufficient that the process or the reimbursement is addressed in the collective bargaining agreement? Is that considered preapproval? Or is there actual submission and preapproval before the expenses undertaken?
Which paragraph are you looking at?
Not specifically. That was more of a general question, but I guess I'm looking at the standards for reimbursements, number five? Because it does make reference to.
So it may be limited by contract?
Because I know it's addressed in at least one of the contracts.
Administrative contracts, right?
Don't collective bargaining.
There is, there are some reimbursement funds that are allocated in the teacher's contract as well.
Right.
So that, that is an approved fund, but then the actual request for reimbursement, that has an internal process as well, where they submit paperwork. It gets approved by committee, by the district evaluation committee, and then there's paperwork that has to be filled out. The reimbursement is only the cost of the, for that particular fund, it's only the cost of the registration or the tuition up to a certain point for a course. It's not reimbursement for airfare. It's not reimbursement. So there's some limitations.
Okay.
That are outlined in the contract. In terms of administrators or other approved travel, the preapproval process, it's basically when it hits the budget. So if we, if we are planning for a conference, a trip, something, it gets placed in the budget, the annual budget. It goes through the whole budget review and adoption process so that will be considered preapproved, but there's still quite a bit of paperwork and backup that people need to submit. What we're trying to do is say, you can't just go on a conference, come back and say, by the way, I.
Oh, right.
You know, there's processes that are followed.
Absolutely. But as far as kind of more sundry kind of reimbursement, you know, local mileage, transportation, those kinds of places, do they have to submit ahead of time in accordance with this or?
No, but typically, that only applies to people who are assigned between buildings.
Okay.
So the fact of their assignment, you spend part of your day at the junior high school and part of your day at Metcalf requires travel, so their assignment indicates that they're preapproved for mileage reimbursement. And that is included as a budget line.
Right.
Based on the number of people who have shared buildings as well.
Perfect. Thank you. 6237.
So 6237 is an amendment. This is a per diem substitute teacher policy. Right now, we are paying substitutes $75 per day. And that is the lowest price that is paid for substitute teachers in the state. There are several other districts that do pay $75. Let me tell you what is currently happening. What's happening is substitutes are going to places where the reimbursement is a little bit higher, or they're going to places where they have opportunities for long-term substitute positions. And in a lot of cases, the long-term substitute positions are also in places that are paying slightly higher rates per diem for the subs. We are at a point right now where we have uncovered classrooms pretty much every single day. There are not enough substitutes. As a result of that, teachers have to cover the classes. And they have a rate of reimbursement for their coverage that is based on their contract. And what's happening is we're paying double what it would cost us to fill the position with a substitute at $75 a day to cover the classrooms with actual teacher covers. And teachers hate covers, so that creates a whole other series of issues. And we have a particular problem at Wauwum because Wauwum is such a small school, and the only time that anybody has a period where they are free to cover is when specials are running, and specials only run three times a day. So there are large sections of the day where there's nobody to cover a class. And that means that kids are losing specials. You have to pull a special teacher to go cover a classroom, and then the specials are lost for that day, or the principal is covering, or a reading teacher has to be pulled to cover the class. It's really, there's a lot of problems with that. So we looked at the rates of substitutes in communities that surround us, and $90 is paid in a couple of them. It's the highest rate. So our hope is that this will not really cost us a lot more money because we hope that we're going to bring substitutes in, reduce the coverage expense, and in the end, hopefully, we see that this ends up being a wash. But this is an attempt to get more subs in because we're not covering classrooms at this point.
Have you ever considered day-to-day sub, like elementary building, K through 6? You have someone that comes in every day?
We had that, and the problem is, if we do that, they're basically considered employees of the district. And because of all the healthcare language that exists right now, you could be opening yourself up to having to pay family healthcare for all of the building subs. And so that was happening in my first year here before all the changes to the healthcare laws came into place. And we actually had several days where the subs were not needed in buildings. So they were there, which is great, but we were fearful of all of the changes that were happening with healthcare. So that's the theory about that.
I think it works in bigger districts probably a little bit better, anyway.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
From a budget perspective, I mean, how does that play into this, what if we budget for next year, and is this, is it a wash or is it, you know?
Yeah, I think it's going to be a wash, but what I, I originally thought, maybe we'd put this in place for next year, but, but I actually think I'd like to see us put it in place now so that we can take a look at what the impact is, and then we can make some adjustments as necessary. I mean, at the end of the day, I don't think it's going to, it's going to be a massive change one way or the other. My guess is that it'll be somewhere in the range of canceling each other out, the added costs and the decreased costs of covers. But everybody in the world would be happier if the classes were covered by substitutes as opposed to pulling teachers or losing teachers during their prep periods.
There's a lot of administration that goes around operating the covers. I'll just say that, from Patty to the superintendent to the Patty Doubles and our substitute coordinators of, and into the buildings.
Are we all set?
Yeah.
Okay, so a motion to approve policy 6237 as amended.
A motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried. Okay. And now we have policy 2155.
Okay, 2155 is the indemnification for school administrators and school committee members. The wording of the previous policy, it was confusing as to who was covered. It really made reference to what some would interpret as just district-level administrators. School committee's always been covered. And then others would interpret the wording as if it were all district administrators. So the request was for this policy to be reviewed by our school attorney, which it has been. He did make some recommended adjustments. And those adjustments have been incorporated into this policy. It just makes it very clear who is covered, meaning school administrators, district administrators, school committee. And the rest of it is fairly consistent with the previous language. So Andrew's recommendations were clarify who's covered, and then a couple of wording adjustments based on his review.
So it's not in red, but it's number three of the policy. Person's qualified for indemnification defined. That's the language that we modified.
It's a pretty standard policy that you see in most school districts. And again, the real issue was, the wording could be interpreted in a couple of different ways, and the recommendation was clear it up, make it very explicit as to the fact that all administrators in the district, including your school administrators, are covered.
Make a motion to approve the amended policy 2155.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, then we have the refunding of the $5.8 million. Okay, then we have the refunding of the five-point-eight million dollar, million-dollar bond debt service.
So, good evening. This was a nice little overture made to us by Rybeck, the Rhode Island Health and Education Building Corp., who issues the bonds for the state of Rhode Island, districts and municipalities. And basically, they're at a point where they are going to take several communities, districts, maybe some towns, and they're going to take all the outstanding bonds and essentially refund them and get a, at a better rate, thereby reducing the overall debt service for the participating entities. And this was, again, through Rybeck. And if you look at the last page where the graphs are, you can see our existing debt service on the most left-hand side. So, three-point-five million general fund bond. We have two more years left on that, 2017, 18, and then that bond goes away, and then the existing five-point-eight million, and then our total debt in the right-hand column of that chart. And then with the refunding, you can see, for the first two years, it's a, it's kind of a blended of the three-point-five and the five-point-eight, which shows us with the savings, netting a savings of roughly, you know, twelve thousand dollars in seventeen and eighteen, and then averaging around thirty thousand dollars on an annual basis for the remainder of the bond debt service out to 2029 for a total savings of three-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, which is really a nice thing. I know that several community, committee members over the years have asked about, you know, is there an opportunity to get better rates in inheritance? So, it's a really, it's a great project. But one of the things that we want to make sure is that we're really focusing on, for auditing purposes, getting the language in the, in the school committee, which is the highest governing authority for the district, to kind of commit that stuff to language so we have a nice trail of what's going on. So, the motion is at the bottom of the...
Yes.
Of there, so. Is there any questions?
Looks like a nice savings. Thank you. Okay, so, we can have a motion to approve the participation in the Ryback refunding program for the five-point-eight million dollar bond debt service.
So made.
Second.
All in favor? Question... Oh, I'm sorry, turn.
Bob, can you tell me what the cost of the refunding is?
Yes, so, the cost of the, to refund the project is about thirty-five to thirty-eight thousand, and the reason there's a range is when they actually execute, because of the dollar value involved, that's, that could be, you know, it could be a three-thousand-dollar swing. The fees are included in the bond issue, so we will be getting the reimbursement on that, on the, on the cost of the thirty-five to thirty-eight thousand, and the savings as depicted include the cost of the savings. So, it's all incorporated in there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, unfinished business? We have the reserve capital project update. Anything on that?
Stage two is submitted, and now we're just kind of in a waiting stance for Ry to approve that, and then we go into stage three, which will really start getting active. Now, a nice little lull for a moment here. I will say this, that Ry had their team of assessors in district today. They were going through with Mr. Plumlee, and basically Ry is doing their own assessment of all the districts in the, in the state. But it's interesting, so there were two individuals doing it, and I chanced upon them as they were doing their things, and the comment from the both of them was, "This is a really nice district you have here." So, it's really, it's refreshing when you hear outsiders, and they're going around to all the districts in the state, so I just thought I'd pass that along.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing. Okay, let's see, reports and comments, if they have anything. So, we have a letter from the West Greenwich Town Council, Cork, approving Thomas Mulcahy, Charlene Randall, and they have Lee Kissinger in here, but I think we approve Lee Kissinger. So, that's okay. So, we have our three members from West Greenwich, and how we're doing in Exeter. Are we all set with the Exeter, the charter commission?
Thank you.
Do we have, do we hear from Exeter? I know we have Mark and, but does Bill have to get, did they have their meeting? The town council?
Yes.
Yeah, and I thought they said that Ray...
Yes.
Okay.
And Allen?
Yeah.
What was it, Ray?
Well, Bill Zercher, right?
Yeah, Bill Zercher.
Yes.
So, those two are all set? Okay.
Yeah, that came out, I don't know that we did an official letter on it, but we did get a notification.
Okay, good. All right. So, that charter commission's ready to roll? Good.
You're on this, right?
Well, actually, I lean stocks. I don't know.
Who sets up the first?
Do we have?
Who sets up the first meeting? We'll do that for Robin?
I mean, because it's standing, I don't know.
Okay.
The chairs start, or what is it?
I didn't do it last time.
Oh.
I said Robin can send it, right?
All right, I'll get in there.
It was Robin, yeah.
Okay, and then we can, I think, with the minutes we have to call the chair, I'll just...
Yeah, that's right. I mean, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I don't have enough time on my plate or whatever.
Okay, good. All right, let's see, important dates and meetings. Let's see, March 28th, we have the public hearing at seven. April 11th, the all-day referendum. That evening, eight-thirty, we'll meet to get the results of the budget. April 12th, we have the school committee meeting at our usual library location for the high school. April 26th, school committee meeting.
Does the public hearing, or the auditorium?
I don't know.
Yeah, it'll probably be the auditorium. I think last year we, did we move it to the library last year? And I want to say it's because there was an overlapping event.
We did move something because the plate was going on.
It wasn't that. So, I mean, I'm planning for the auditorium. There's nothing scheduled, there's nothing that should be going on on that day in the auditorium.
Do we need to go into executive session?
It's so well-entended.
It is.
I know. Probably hold it in the makerspace. Under B and C.
Make a motion to go into executive session under forty-two, forty-six, five, A.
Yeah, eight-two. You can say eight-two is fine.
Eight-two, and also C, forty-two, forty-six, five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right.